The Goldbar Council meeting of February 17, 2015, please stand for the class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the British Islands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I apologize for delay. On the record show that all council members are present. I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Captain. I'll be going to the AWC All Cities Meeting tomorrow on Thursday to talk to legislators about the needs of the cities in general. A lot of things that we should have revenue coming into the city that they're denying. So I'm hoping to make an effect out there. Chief.
I have a little bit today. We had a just outside of town. We had a possible burglary again right after April 15th. And then some run from down here today. So running into town, we don't know where he went. But we still have quite a bit of property crime. It's just on the upswing across the state, throughout the county as well. I think I brought it up by speaking in the state of Washington means the nation in property crimes. And we're no different out here in other areas of the state. It's just really going up. So we're working on trying to get a handle on seeing what we can do, how we can impact it. Bring in some guys with some training for us consulting that hopefully can help us in ways that others, other members of our office aren't familiar with using. So we'll continue to work on that and try to get these things solved and try to get some of it buttoned up. Hopefully in some point in time in the future, we can start figuring out ways to address some of the issues as well. We'll try and give things, but it takes time to figure out there in order.
Nothing until we got the ordinance.
Leave?
Nothing.
I'm sorry, John. You're not the regular spot.
Thank you for the council for starting your meeting late so we could have a public hearing before the panel, before the hearing examiner. And it's my first experience since being employed by the city of Goldbar to go before a hearing examiner. And basically, it was pretty cool. And there were a lot of people in the audience. I think you got to see it was well conducted, you know, it was structured. And it was just nice to see something like that take place. And you know, maybe, maybe the city of Goldbar is making history because, you know, we're front running out of all this fetalized cannabis marijuana stuff. It'll be interesting to see how it all pans out. And then after the meeting tonight, I will be leaving early because I have to be in Yakima. I was supposed to be here today for continuing education for my CDU's through law certification. So I'll be leaving about to Yakima when I get done with the public council. There was, you know, we used to have a paneling commission and like public hearings that go before the paneling commission. Then they would go before the council. It's all combined in, I mean, it was really professional. Not that the council and the paneling commission are, but I mean, it first has been throughout 34 years. You know, and he has, you know, he's separated from Goldbar. He bases his decisions on fact and law, which is pretty neat. So thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
John?
No.
Maybe.
Well, I was at the hearing and it was, yeah, he's very structured, very professional, very experienced. I was impressed. It was, it was well done. And I agree with you. I think that Goldbar may be just a little bit cutting edge here. You think?
Awesome.
Nothing in this company.
Do we have any cities with any comments at this time?
I'm not to say, why doesn't John leave? Why does he stay when he has to go to Yakima?
I have two things on the agenda that I have.
Because he's dead. Sorry, but it's just he's my pet.
I saw Tuesday. Thank you.
Any further citizen comments? We have no business at this time. One comment though, on your street, an update, is the sign is up on ours. But we can't put it on the highway side because it's state. State has to put a sign. So we will try and get state to get over. Also B&amp;L is doing some kind of construction that's going to close down Dorment. We're hoping it's that hole. Right now, not sure exactly what it is, but it's closed to close the 23rd through 25th, something like that, correct? But closing on Dorment.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what, what their work is going to entail, but it'll be next week sometime. I don't know if they posted it today.
I just saw it.
Yeah, they're going to be working on the crossing, I think.
Yeah, they didn't say.
Probably the micro.
They'll do something about their.
I just got, I just got the traffic plan.
And the, yeah, the prison crew will be out the, I believe he said the 19th. John, Richard said the 19th?
I don't know, I'm pretty sure on the board over the shop.
I'm pretty sure it's the 19th, yes.
When we came up, there was two four-wheel drives sitting in the mud puddle. Toyota and a Ford pickup.
What we need is Jersey barriers up until it gets addressed.
Because when they come out, they hit the asphalt and break it off.
I want to see what B&amp;L is going to do right now. And them happening so fast after a place, wonder if they're doing something about it. But I thought I'd give you an update. New business. We have the yearly 2015 valve rebuild. John?
Okay, what this is, every year we have DC systems come out and they set the PRBs and do repairs on the pressure reducing valves, clay valves, what they're called. They do it every year. You know, it's in the budget. It's in the budget this year because of the expenditure of $4,800, I believe, $4,800. You know, I bring it before the council for your approval because we have ordinance, so if I spend over X amount of dollars, you have to prove it. Next year, what we're going to do is this year, we're going to start working on, you know, itemized lists of things that we do each year. So when we pass the budget next year, you'll see clay valve, X amount of dollars. This company, X amount of dollars. So we need to do that. They're going to rebuild some and they keep, you know, the pressures in the system stabilized. So I'd like the council to approve that expansion.
This is bearing in well on four?
No, this is, this is wall number four, wall number three. The pressure reducing station up by the corner of First and First Avenue West. You know, it's throughout the system. They reset them, they rebuild anything that needs to be rebuilt.
So they're going to do all this for that $4,000?
Yeah, whatever the total price is, 40.
All four of these rebuilt is $4,902.
Plus they, plus they set the pressures and check all of this stuff out.
Yeah, this isn't per rebuild.
Pardon?
No, it's total.
Well, no, it's not because if you look at the next to last paragraph, the city shall apply supply, all equipment personnel and documentation. And if there's any parts, then that's above this.
Yeah, I saw that.
Additional costs will be there.
Because they can't see until they get into a rep.
But it starts at $4,902.
That's generally why they've been charging right around that. They've been, every year, they, yeah, they come out every year.
I'll make a motion that just be approved.
No second motion.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. We have the Fifth Street sidewalk improvement, the VAC contract agreement. This is where the.
What this is, we got the grant to do Fifth Street sidewalk improvement, storm ratings, and parking. We're ready to go and have it engineered now. We went out within the last two years for requests or proposals for engineering services. And that request for proposals, I got a big stack of engineering firms, you know, and I could choose or the city could opt to choose any engineering firm within that stack to do projects like this. I chose Blue Line Incorporated. They've been around a long time. I know of some engineers there that do good work. They work well with small cities on these types of projects. They help with the grant application. They're going to possibly be looking at our sidewalks, we believe. But anyway, I believe they'll do a good job for this city. I got ahold of Greg Armstrong, I believe, who's the one I got with, with the, with the people who we got the grant from. They looked over this proposal and they're satisfied with the, with the proposal and amount of the funds of, what is it, $34,800? You know, I have their blessings on that. So I'd like the council to approve the Blue Line engineering to go ahead and the most of proceed for the engineering and design of the sidewalks, storm rain, and parking for the Fifth Street project.
I'll make a motion that we, we the answer question, are we approved, Blue Line or this project? We already approved the project.
The project's, we approved, approved for this contract, the Blue Line for the $34,800.
Approved Blue Line is our engineering firm for this project.
Yes.
I make a motion for, to approve Blue Line as our engineering firm for this project for our Fifth Street sidewalk project.
Second motion.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter?
What's the fixed fee of $2,900?
Pardon?
What's the fixed fee of $2,900? Page one.
Yeah, that's the man.
Fix it hot?
I think that's, you say fixed fee, that's the.
Over and above the 30?
No, no, I think that's part of the whole thing. That's one component. I believe. And that's their fee for many.
Yeah, the total, the total thing was $32,000, $32,000. $34,800. It doesn't say that's including a fixed fee of $2,900. So is it fixed fee above, over and above the 30?
No, that wouldn't be over and above. If you look at the contract, it's not to exceed.
Right.
Yeah. So that's not over and above.
Okay.
And in the back, there's a little spreadsheet where all those up.
Yeah, these are just great. Kind of an automaton.
You're comfortable with these guys?
Yes.
You very good at this work?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
They've done, they've done a lot of work in the valley.
Motion is carried.
Have a nice drive.
Thanks.
Next we have ordinance 670, it's a second reading.
So what you received out in your boxes is two versions. One is the strike through so you can see visually what all changes were proposed. And then the other is the clean version. And I believe it's ready for a second reading. It incorporates the city attorney, comments and feedback, as well as RCWs that Paul wanted incorporated in it. There are two places where I feel council needs to put input and that you should do before you do the final adoption. But I don't know that you need to do it before the second adoption for a second reading because there's a lot of material here to go through. So that part's up to you.
I do have a question because you had said that there was some highlighting and I haven't seen any highlighting yet.
Are you in the strike through version or the clean?
The strike through.
Highlighting is.
Is the highlighting in that page?
I believe so.
I attached a cover sheet with, for you on your packet and that also listed where those were.
Gotcha. This is a slog, you know.
It is. It's a lot of, a lot of dry reading, a lot of dry writing.
Did you, there was no action taken on this tonight, is there?
You can ask tonight to adopt it for the second reading.
Yes.
But it's not ready for adoption, final adoption, until you put your input in on those specific areas.
Yeah, because I, there's quite a bit of stuff here. It's going to take some time to go through.
It will. That's why I put it in your packets last couple of weeks ago.
Okay, I still don't see any highlighting.
Well, there's none. There's some back on page 21.
Paul has highlighted. Paul got highlighting and I didn't.
It's all my fault.
What's going on?
It may be that it's just the way it printed out. So page 22, you have the original out of your box?
This is it. Look in here. Dog year. Note taking.
So Davey, you have the one that had my cover letter to it? Then for some reason yours is printed here.
Was it good for some highlighting, some of those?
If you, we'll back up a little. If you look at your cover sheet. Yeah, one at a time. And if you look at your cover sheet that I included, it gives the section headings where your input is needed.
Right.
8.12.110, 8.16, you see it there in the second paragraph? And in the second column. So you can use that as your, you can use that as your guideline if your copy for some reason didn't have the highlighting on.
And I had seen that and then as I was reading through, I got the part here where the lawyer wants it deleted, but Chief Casey wants it retained, and the other day around. And I'm still not seeing any highlighting.
So they all went through their copy machine at the same time? And I can't explain why some had it and some didn't, but.
Well, the copy machine does highlighting?
It prints it in color. So I don't know why some printed in color and some didn't. But you don't need the highlighting.
Where are the lowlights if we don't have the highlighting?
But you don't need the fancy highlighting. It's listed in the cover sheet. And if you really want the yellow, I will go through and highlight them.
I would be lazy.
But for tonight, you can choose to adopt it for the second reading and then go through and come next, at the next meeting with your comments on the council input.
I'll make a motion that we adopt this for the second reading.
Little second, Pat.
We can all take it long and read it until next week. Agree on it, disagree.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried.
Can I comment on one more thing before we move on? Just something for the council to think about. When I'm getting these things ready for packets like this, obviously it's a lot of paper. I've been putting them, I try to have them in your boxes two weeks prior to the meeting so you have time to go through and read them. But some of these are going home and not coming back for the meeting. So then we end up copying them again for the council meeting. So we're doubling the amount of paper. So I'm wondering if you would rather have it in your packet that you're handed at the meeting? Or if you'd rather have them in your boxes in advance?
I'd rather have mine in advance.
It's a lot of reading.
Yeah.
So I will put your general packet information for council meetings in your boxes in advance. But then you have to remember to bring them to the council meeting. If that's all right with all of you? Thank you.
Yeah, does the Homer's County Tomorrow? Rich? I think it's just in front of you. What we're asking for is just somebody to volunteer to be on the committee. Anybody? This is about the future and.
Growth management.
Growth management and things that will happen in our city on a tomorrow basis.
Too loud.
Turn it down. Don't have too many hats.
Let me know how I feel about that.
Do you want to get rid of that? Please?
Yeah.
Are they up? Are you tired of that? Hey, cool. That seems to be one of your interest areas.
Yeah. I can mix something up.
Do I, do you need the appointment by motion? It's an official appointment as a volunteer to a growth management thing. I think Paul should be informed of a motion.
Can I get a motion?
I move that Mr. Palmer be our representative to the SCT steering committee for 2015.
One second.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried.
I already had your name down there. I thought you were going to do that. Come on, Mike.
You already have the.
Resolution 1502 for PRR officer assignment. We're taking that up. The, what has occurred is that the city clerk informally gave it over to the mayor and now we're just making it more efficient. What will I be? That designation.
I move that we approve resolution 15 dash or two.
One second.
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. We have the DLAS partnership contract. This is just the business licensing agreement.
And it's a continuation of what we've.
It's a continuation of what we have had. We just renewed.
Then I move that we accept the partnership contract.
One second.
Does anyone wish to discuss this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Does the council have any comments today?
Yeah, I have one. Yeah, some time ago, we talked about exploring microphones. You know, this. Just checking, no progress.
Wireless.
We wanted, yeah, I found wireless. I'm trying to reset, you find out, make sure that we're not going to overload, there's so many on the microphone. We're not going to have pizza watching each other. So, we should.
I'd like to say thank you for all the work you've done. Yeah. All these meetings.
So what have you, have you made any arrangements for the microphones? So what's the outlook on that time was?
I'm not certain, I will try, try and get on the next council meeting.
Well, if there's anything I can do to help you with that, if you want me to do any running or research, you can let me know.
Thank you.
I'd like to add something to our agenda for the next meeting. When Mr. Strong was filling in as mayor the first meeting this year, we kind of had a brainstorming session on things potentially happening in Gold Bar and whatnot, where we wanted to see and our visions. Uh, one of those was a beautification of Gold Bar, and I'd like to revisit that. And I have a few ideas that I could bring up in a future meeting, I'm working on a couple different things.
If I may add to that. I've already approached a school on this sidewalk that's going in, we want to add stenciling by the kids or something similar. So we're bringing the beautification from the school down to U S two, and we'll start it with there. They also want to do stenciling, paint stenciling on our store drains of salmon to tie it with the ecology and keeping our area beautiful. We're extending that to the sidewalk for the same thing that everything needs pure water.
One of the things.
The first project.
One of the things that I'm working on, and I need to get ahold of Saltman High School, and see if they have the welding program, um, is for them to make hanging baskets. So the kids who build it in that shop can partake, and every time they drive up and down Highway two, look up and say, hey, I made a part of that. And then in full, turn around and have the F F A group, because they do plant flower sales every spring towards the end of the year, construct the actual flowers and baskets, and we can hang that. And it kind of keeps everything in the community, so that's kind of the direction that I'm looking to go. Um, I don't have direct answers or figures or anything like that yet, but hopefully by the next meeting, I can have more information.
And that's really a wonderful idea. I wonder if there might be some way to do a partnership with the city and the schools in that vein.
That way it'd involve, my thought process was it'd involve especially kids that are a little bit older, and it'll bring them to life, and, you know, they can become a part of the community. And, you know, it just kind of ties everything together, gives us a sense of pride.
Excellent.
We also have Volunteer America too.
I'm just feeling sorry.
Right.
Um, we can have a side conversation, sir.
I know something, um, one other part to this, and I know we've talked about grant writing. There are grants for city beautification, so as soon as we get on board with that, that's something we can look at fulfilling also. So.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Did you hear any more about the correction people coming in?
The nineteenth?
Hiring of the, the penitentiary people.
Right, they're the prison.
Yeah.
They should be coming the nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
I believe so.
Oh, good.
That's one of the, one of theirs is the Duquesne Road. We have minutes for November twelfth through fourteen, with the special meeting that are not now ready to be approved.
I move that we approve the minutes of the November twelfth, two thousand and fourteen meeting as special meeting and as time.
Can I get a second?
One second.
Does anyone wish to discuss this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried. We have the February third, twenty fifteen minutes. We have the motion for February third, twenty fifteen minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes for February third, twenty fifteen.
Second, Pat?
Does anyone wish to discuss this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried.
I move that we approve vouchers with check numbers three zero four one eight through three zero four one one. Four, four, one, thank you guys. Totally fifteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents. With the claim total of thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents in payroll, with two thousand two hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Are there any citizens covered at this time? Yes.
The city, didn't the city allow that to get tablets or?
Use, stand up.
Allow that, didn't the city get tablets for the council?
Laptops.
Laptops.
Laptops?
Yeah.
Well, my question is, why don't they get their packets electronically on their laptops? Because some of us are old fashioned, and we like to have stuff we can write up?
I like hard copies.
I just, that kind of defeated the purpose of getting them, and nobody wants to use them.
I have additional comments if I can. So, I haven't seen the agenda yet, so I didn't know if it would be on tonight's agenda. But last week when we talked about the medicinal marijuana shop that wanted to go in, and I was asked if I had comments as far as the risk of the city. And I apologize for getting kind of caught up in the conversation about viability and legal risk in court, rather than actual risk to the community for public safety purposes. And so I wanted to comment about that if I could. The federal law, we all know federal law doesn't allow these marijuana shops to bank. So they can't take their money, they can't take a credit card, they can't take bank checks, and they can't take their money and go put it into the bank under the law. And so they tend to be cash-only businesses. And so the risk to the community involved with these things is, number one, they're selling a product that's of high value for burglaries and robberies, well, always has been and still is. Um, but number two, they're carrying all that cash on hand now if they're selling to the public. And so, um, they tend to be a very high-level target for armed robberies, and especially organized groups of criminals that come in and do very hostile, very dangerous and violent takeover armed robberies. We'd have them at the co-op in Snohomish, uh, within the last twenty-four hours, I was watching the news on television, and they talked about a shop down in Seattle that's been a victim of a burglary, where they did thousands of dollars of damage to neighboring businesses in order to prevent being detected, so that they could go in and burglarize the marijuana business. Um, and also that same marijuana business in just the last few weeks being a victim of a violent armed robbery. And the fact is that does happen at those kinds of businesses. We've had two incidents at the one out here on Highway two that I'm aware of, um, where the crooks or bad guys have gone in very well armed, and in one case they didn't find anybody there, but they got their product. Uh, but the video surveillance clearly shows that these guys were armed and prepared for a hostile confrontation with probably us. Um, but also one where they went in and they did find the place occupied, and, um, committed kidnapping, first degree assault, um, well, assault with a deadly weapon, whether it's first or second degree, but, um, and robbery while they were there. So the concern for us is that we're awfully remote out here. We often have just a deputy working a four hundred square mile beat, and the next guy hopefully insulted. And so when that kind of a thing goes down, uh, we're not in a position like they might be in Seattle, where a hundred cops could be on scene in a few minutes. Um, we're not in that position out here. We're in a position out here where it might be several minutes before just the first police officer arrives. So that's something I want people to keep in mind when they think about how a retail marijuana business in town is that public safety feature of it. They, they get robbed, they just do. Um, and these are armed robberies going down. And so it's, it's a rather dangerous prospect for the city. Uh, the second thing is, we talked about talking with the drug task force, and I know the mayor made efforts to get ahold of someone at the task force, and somehow the, I talked to the task force commander today, I called him on his personal phone and said, hey, can we talk a bit about this marijuana business? So a co-op that is legal is one that either they provide for themselves, or they provide for other people but for free, they cannot sell it. They also can't put up a notice at their front door that says, for a donation of this amount of money, you can have an ounce of marijuana. That's not a donation, that's a sale. So a donation means that somebody comes in and gives them money regardless of getting product in return. That's clearly defined in tax laws. And a, and for them to give it away for free means that somebody could go out there and stand on the side of the highway and say, hey, these guys are giving away free marijuana, everybody come and get yours, and hundreds of people could come in and out of their shop, just taking away their free ounce of marijuana, and the people in the shop can't charge for it. We know from the fact that he told us he's going to pay sales tax, he's going to sell it. And so, um, that he's not giving it away for free, and so it's not a donation, it's a sale. And that is unlawful. And I read, I went over that with the drug task force commander, and he said, just period, it's unlawful. The plan right now, the state of Washington is trying to clear up the muddy waters with medicinal marijuana, and clear up the, the, just the unclear laws and unclear enforcement ability, so that hopefully when we do charge somebody for violating whatever law they violate, that we can get a jury to be able to understand the law so that they can apply it. Can't get a guilty verdict on many of these right now, because the juries just don't understand what they're looking at. Um, and it's taken a while just for law enforcement to get it to where we've got an understanding, at least the drug task force and their special prosecutors that they have. If the state doesn't clear up the law, it's still clear that these places that are exchanging marijuana for cash, that's a sale, it's not a donation, um, that, that they are operating outside the law, and Snohomish County Drug Task Force is going to issue a letter to all of these businesses that they are to close down shop and cease and desist immediately. And so with that said, if we license this business to operate in town, we're licensing most likely an unlawful business unless these guys commit to they're going to give away free marijuana. And I, I doubt it.
But, but can I just mention that that's not what they're, they're asking for the application, is for the production and processing of it, they're not.
That's the five oh two. The other one is the medicinal shop that wants to sell, is that correct?
But the, the hearing that we had tonight was about.
That was five oh two.
Manufacturing.
Yes. But the ones that talked to us last week were the guys that want the medicinal storefront to supply marijuana for community members out of their storefront. And if they're giving it away for free, truly, then, then they may not, the mayor may not be acting within the law, that's a little bit petty. But if they're exchanging marijuana for money inside the shop, that's a sale, it's not a donation. So that's what's, that's completely unlawful, it's not. Now, King County has a different idea, they don't, they're not saying it's lawful, they're just saying that it's too much of a mess, and we're not going to deal with it. Um, that's what's going on there. Snohomish County, they are saying, we are not going to ignore applications of the law. And so we're going to give the state time to clear this up, but if they don't get it cleared up, then we're going to step in and enforce the laws we have, the way they are. So that's what I got from Snohomish County Drug Task Force, and that was today, I had that conversation. So I just wanted to get that information out there, so that you guys have the, you know, the accurate information on what, what's legal, what's not. And, uh, Pat Slack also offered, if you guys want him out here with some advance notice, so that he can make plans, or he will come out and speak to the city, whether it's a council meeting or a special meeting, or a forum like we had today, or whatever. Um, and I've got his phone number, and we'll just, we'll just call him and get it set up. So I'll wait for the mayor to let me know if that's what we want, and when.
At least give us his main, what's coming down.
Yep.
Actually, I have a question actually for Officer Casey, and actually for the rest of the council too. My name is Lee Simpson, and I just recently purchased a house right over here at Shelby. I'm actually a new addition here in the great city of Gold Bar. But I share Officer Casey's concern about the security risk, because it is a cash-only basis. There are shops though, which actually do take, um, debit, well, actually do take cards, they actually take debit cards to get away from the cash. And, um, two is like, uh, my one question which I actually have for Officer Casey is, if once this operation does go on in, how is this going to have an impact on the law enforcement? And also two, what sort of impact revenue-wise is this going to have actually on our community in the city of Gold Bar? What are we expecting out of this? Uh, that was kind of not made clear when we had this meeting earlier today. You know, they were basically just talking about the building codes, the size of the building, but they never actually clarified, what are we expecting back, you know, for the community? And I just want to know, is there, is there going to be any type of clarification on that?
At this point in time. We don't even know.
Okay.
What the city, it's one of the things that I'm going down to Olympia tomorrow for, is the files from our legislators, if they. is to find from our legislators if they've cleared that up.
Well, that's gonna be, they're not, I don't, yeah, that's gonna be like, I think, in the next couple of days, it'll be coming through that, I believe.
Yep.
You know, so, but, so-
As it stands, by what I've read in the laws, the state gives everything.
So as a community, we're not gonna get anything at all from this operation?
As it stands right now.
Not yet.
All cities are going down to Olympia to try and change that.
Yeah, because I think, because if that's the way how it stands, if then it's gonna like come into, you know, into our community and have this operation going on and we as a community get nothing out of it, uh, even though I am suppo, I am a supporter for five oh two and also for the medicinal, I actually go to dispensary myself, but if that's gonna be the case, are we not gonna get any type of benefit from that? And I don't see any reason why it should be there unless we get some sort of benefit out of that operation. Because earlier tonight, as I was leaving, there was another gentleman, I think it was Gary Alpine, um, he informed me that he's actually going to be trying to put another operation right behind him. I don't know if you're familiar with that at all.
The one tonight was Rob Logan?
Yeah, tonight was a Thompson.
Thompson and-
And then Ho. And this guy, Gary Alpine, he was telling me that he was looking into getting this area for a growing operation, is what it's called.
Let's see that.
Right, and here, this is what he was talking about.
Well, that's rotten, isn't it?
I'm not quite sure what that area is, so it's about-
He followed through, he's a process.
Yeah, and that's the reason why he came out down here to see which way the winds are blowing. Oh, you're welcome, yes, sir. I fully support it, it's as long as we get some sort of benefits on out of it as a community.
That's for Oregon.
Yeah. So, that's all, and that's all I have to say about that right now.
They did a bad job writing.
No, I, I cannot get any click from what I was reading this.
And as they tried to fix it, they convoluted and clouded up and, uh, 'cause they don't know where to go with it.
No.
They're afraid of it. They're afraid of the crime. Anyway, they just did a bad job.
No, you're talking about the current law which we had in the count, the council law which we had today? Oh, I agree.
Hey, this is, it is three minutes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
And we've gone over this conversation for after. Are there any further citizen comments? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second, no motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Council meeting adjourned.